At 7:00 PM, or 7:04, I'm sorry. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Absent is Dwayne. Seated for Dwayne is Kim. Absent is Eric. Seated for Eric is Ruth Ann. Absent is Richard, and the seat is vacant. Tracy is seated for our other vacant seat. So here we are, six of us. All right. Are there any additions to or deletions from the agenda?
Notes whether they're not.
Okay, thank you. Minutes, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes from February 28th? Do we have a motion?
I approve the minutes of February 28th, 2019.
It's been moved by Ruth Ann, seconded by Tracy, that we approve the February 28th, 2019 meeting minutes. Either say yes or no, depending on your... This is going to be new for us after doing the other... On your approval or not?
Aye, yes.
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 It's yes, unanimous. Next matter, I have a short statement we'll read. Are there any commissioners that need to disclose conflict of interest or other contact related to the matter before us tonight?
No, no.
The purpose of this public hearing is to consider a use by special review for most of tract A in Parker Homestead filing 1, First Amendment, that is generally located on the northwest corner of Chambers Road and Double Angel Road. The presentation by town staff will include an overview of the use by special review, including, number one, the details of the project, two, the criteria contained in the town code that must be considered by the planning commission in its review of a use by special review, and three, a recommendation based on the analysis conducted by staff. Please know the staff has provided a copy of all emails and correspondence sent by the public, and they are included in our staff report packet that we as members of the planning commission have reviewed. These emails are part of the public record. Upon completion of the town staff presentation, the applicant will make a presentation regarding the application. Upon completion of the applicant's presentation, the public testimony portion of this hearing will begin. Each member of the public will be allowed three minutes to make a presentation. Time cannot be traded or accumulated between individuals, and the town staffer will control the timer. There are a number of members of the public that desire to testify tonight, so be clear and concise in your comments. We actually treat, you know, try not to repeat testimony provided by other members of the public. You can certainly indicate that you agree with what other speakers have said without restating what they have said. I hope that you have filled out the public comment card that was provided to you when you entered the chambers. If not, there are comment cards in the back of the room, which you can fill out and hold on to until you're ready to speak. I will call the speakers to the podium by sections in the chamber and by location. Once your section or group is called, and if you desire to speak, please bring your speaker card, if you haven't already turned it, and line up on this side of the room, right over here along that wall. And when it's your turn to speak, leave the card with staff members over here at the table and proceed to the podium. I understand that many of you wish to provide comment on the application. However, I ask that you respect the statements that are made by town staff, the applicant, members of the public, and my fellow planning commissioners. It's important that this public hearing be held in a dignified and respectful manner. To that end, there shall only be one speaker at a time and no audience participation or reaction. Please do not clap, yell boo, make additional commentary from the audience, or otherwise interrupt proceedings. Please note that any questions from the public to the planning commissioner staff or the applicant will not be addressed during public testimony. Town staff or the applicant will answer questions that are relevant to the use by special review after the public testimony portion of the meeting is closed. I will close the public hearing after the final comments are made by town staff, and then we will open the debate and discussion of the evidence that pertains to the use by special review among the planning commission members until there is a call for a motion and a recommendation to town council. Okay, and we will open the public hearing on the... Let me get the correct title. The most tract A, Parker Homestead filing, First Amendment, use by special review. We will open that at 7:09. Paul?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of planning commission. As was just noted, the hearing this evening is case number Z-18-004. The applicant is commonly referred to as the Back Forty, and the request again is for a use by special review. The subject property is located at the northwest corner of Chambers Road and Double Angel Road. Within the area of the subject property is a variety of uses, from drainage open space to single-family homes, to the Echo Park Stadium that accommodates hundreds of folks at a time, as well as the ball fields to the south and a church to the east. The character of this area is a mix of uses, with everything from the open space to the single-family detached. The subject property was annexed by the town in 2010 and has been zoned for commercial uses since that time. The applicant has submitted this use by special review in order to operate an indoor archery and gun range with ancillary retail sales on the subject property as required by the Parker Homestead plan development. The request that's before planning commission this evening is a use by special review. That is one of three types of land uses that a potential use can fall into here in the town of Parker. The first types of uses are generally referred to as uses by right. Those are uses that are consistent with the identified zone district, so think of a restaurant in a commercially zoned area. The second types of uses are those uses by special review that are generally consistent with the identified zone district, but have the potential to have external impacts beyond those anticipated by the identified zone district, which requires additional scrutiny through the public hearing process. The third category of uses are those that uses that are prohibited and just flat out not allowed by its own district. Staff's recommendation this evening and planning commission's recommendation this evening are based on the nine approval criteria identified in the town's land development ordinance. Those nine approval criteria will be identified later in this presentation. The individual site improvements and building construction are not reviewed as part of the use by special review. Those items will be reviewed with a future site plan application. The town's master plan identifies this intersection generally as a neighborhood center. Neighborhood centers are intended to serve the surrounding neighborhood's commercial needs. Generally, they end up being things like retail and personal business services, office, recreation, restaurants, things of that nature. The subject property is a part of the Parker Homestead plan development. It is identified as planning area 1 within that document. Planning area 1 is all of the area kind of south and east of the drainage and south of Chambers Road. That planning area allows for a mix of uses, anywhere from residential to commercial uses. And as mentioned, this zone document does require a use by special review for the request. In reviewing the application, there were three common areas of concern that were heard by staff. That would be noise, air quality, and criminal activity. So staff will go through a brief analysis of each of those three items ahead of the analysis of the approval criteria. The applicant has provided a noise study. That noise study does identify existing noise levels in the area, noise levels that are generally acceptable in the traditional suburban neighborhood, as well as strategies and construction methods to either mitigate noise levels to a less than significant level or have no impact from the facility on the surrounding uses. As part of the noise study, there were two locations that were selected. One was on the west side of the subject property, on the west side of the existing detention pond on the shared fence line with the residential property. The second one was located on the east side of Chambers, just north of the intersection with Double Angel. Those... Sorry. One location, the first location, the one with the shared property line with the drainage pond and the fence line, identified existing noise levels at a 52 decibel level average. And the location on the east side of Chambers, north of the intersection with Double Angel, identified an existing noise level of 56 decibels average. For context, and as shown on the graphic here, the suburban neighborhood is generally around a 50 DBA. Staff is recommending three conditions of approval related to noise. Those are detailed in your staff report. Again, the second item was air quality. The applicant has provided information from their HVAC designer that would be used in the future building design. Having clean air within the structure, as well as the emissions, ensures employee safety and compatibility with the surrounding area. The applicant does intend to use a dual filter system that will facilitate lead emissions at a level below EPA standards. Staff has recommended two conditions of approval related to the air quality. And again, those are detailed in your staff report. The third is crime. The application did go through a full referral process. As part of that referral process, Parker Police Department did not indicate a potential for increased criminal activity attributable to the proposal more than other traditional commercial uses. This particular site would include site-specific safety measures in order to further deter criminal activity. Staff is also recommending a condition of approval related to site design and layout and things of that nature as well, and that's detailed in your staff report. So as mentioned, there are nine specific approval criteria for a use by special review. The detail of all nine criteria has been provided in your staff report. But just to summarize, the character of the area currently is a mix of uses, including sporting-related uses. Additionally, staff is recommending conditions of approval, that the operator have an open house on a monthly basis in order to ensure compatibility with the neighborhood. The use is consistent with the neighborhood center identified in the town's master plan, as well as the specific goals that were identified in staff's report. For number three, the site is relatively flat. It's not encumbered by a floodplain, is large enough to accommodate multiple commercial buildings. While a site plan has not been submitted, the applicant has indicated an ability to meet the development requirements. There's no impact on capital improvement programs. There will not be required community facilities or services greater than that which are available. The applicant's traffic analysis shows consistency with the assumptions of the master traffic analysis that was done with the original zoning and plating entitlements for the development. Parker Water and Sand has not identified any concerns related to water service as detailed in the previous slides. The applicant has addressed how their development can mitigate air and noise impacts. Again, staff is recommending conditions related to this. The applicant has indicated an ability to meet the landscape requirements, and that as well as a recommended condition this evening. And this site is zoned for and will be used for commercial development. As previously expressed, there's no indication that the request would generate criminal activity more than a traditional commercial use. So there's been several references to the recommended conditions of approval this evening. Essentially, those conditions of approval kind of fall into three families, if you will. The first is related to noise, and that is ensure that there is analysis and review by industry experts. The second is related, family is related to air quality in order to ensure compliance with OSHA and EPA standards and requirements. And then the third family is more related to land use in order to ensure safety and compatibility with the context of the area. As noted in the packet for planning commission this evening, all referral agencies either responded with advisory comments or no comments. That would conclude staff's presentation. Staff recommends that planning commission recommend that town council approve, subject to the conditions in your staff report, the requested use by special review for an indoor archery and gun range on the subject property. Staff is available to answer any questions you all may have. Again, the applicant is present as well. Will have a short presentation, will also be available for any questions planning commission may have.
Questions for staff?
One quick question. Are there any projects that are, have already been approved or in process that have not actually been built adjacent to the subject area?
No.
Okay.
Paul, can you go back to the air quality slide you had? Keep going, the next one.
Yeah, computer's just being a little slow, sorry.
Oh, okay. So it says the small arms range will exhaust an average of 93.3 less than the allowable limit per EPA, less than the allowable limit of buildings that size of just emissions in general?
For, just to make sure I understand the question. So it's 93.3% less than the allowable limit that the EPA has their standard? So there's a standard the EPA has. This would be 93.3% less than that?
Okay. And then can you go back to the map and show us... Sorry, I was looking, I was trying to find the map, and I kind of missed your, the noise studies. Can you, can you just point to that map? Either one.
We'll use this one.
Approximately where?
Sure. So one of the monitoring equipment was set up, again, on the west side of the existing drainage facility, next to the shared property line where the fence line is.
Okay.
The other location was located on the east side of Chambers and north of the intersection of Chambers and Double Angel.
Okay. That's all I have.
Further questions for Paul?
Paul, real quick, what is the perimeter distance between the residential and, and I apologize if you have it in here, I just don't have it in front of me, between the residential line and where the property will? How much of a...
The distance from the, like, the back property line here and here?
Correct.
200 feet?
Yeah, that's the map you gave us.
200?
Yeah. Thank you. I knew it was in the report, I just didn't have it in front of me.
So I do have one more question. You don't have any site plans yet, correct?
That is correct.
So we're not sure where on the parcel this building will be located?
The formal site plan has not been submitted yet, but in all likelihood, it would be relatively adjacent to the shared property line with the drainage pond to the west.
Okay.
Further questions for Paul?
Not right now.
Okay. Does the applicant want to state, do their presentation, please? Step forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ryan.
You have to turn to my side.
I think there's a switch down there, maybe.
Got it. Good afternoon. Appreciate you taking the time to hear me. My name is Ryan Buzzwell. I live at 10032 East Meadow Run here in Parker. Please allow me to take about 15 minutes of your time just to kind of run through a high level of what the facility would potentially look like and the services offered therein. Talk at a very high level about the HVAC system and other operations that would be hanging inside the facility. The first few slides are just some examples of structures that Range Development Services, which is a consultant who builds these around the country, that I've retained to help me through this process. Go ahead. Go ahead. Again, we just kind of want to show with those facilities that they are a high caliber, quality place. It's not a tin shed, you know, that invites criminals and anything else. Inside the facility, it'll be a nice place to hang out. The full intent of this facility is to be a family-friendly center. My kids, my daughter's actually mad at me because the original target I told her was two years, and we're past that. So she wants to know when it's going to happen. But inside the facility, we're going to be able to shop, we're going to be able to train, and we're going to be able to entertain. Again, it's going to be a nice-looking facility with retail and training equipment and accessories for both archery and for the firearms industry. The main business behind this is going to be the training and education portion of the facility. Kind of a general layout of how the firearms will be displayed inside of cases. There will be possibly a few places, like you see in the center there, for, to get the tactile feel of a firearm. I mean, that's a big thing when you're going to purchase this, is how does it feel in your hand? Again, they will not be operational weapons, but they will be real weapons. Indoor and archery programs, there are multiple programs. You know, I can pull up about 20 on a Google search. Joed is the one that I've used personally in the past. Again, there are just a lot of classes for youth in both the firearms and the archery. Again, just another example of additional accessories that can be purchased through the facility. The reason I've kind of chosen this to pursue for the rest of my life and for a career is due to the amount of increase that we've seen in the states for this type of service. As you can see, you know, 10, well, this study's two years old. 2007, there was 4.6 million concealed carry permits. Now we're up to 17.25, and that's two years old. So we're probably pushing, you know, close to 18 million. The industry itself, the firearms industry, is growing at approximately 77% per year. Again, what we're listing on this slide is a handful of classes to be carried, but again, this is the basis of the business. After the first year, I can see this easily doubling, and from, you know, Range Development Services, that's what he's indicated is typically happening inside of these facilities, is they continue to offer more and more classes as we get a feel and a need for what the community wants. From a range check-in standpoint and a safety procedures checkpoint, you do have to go through, you have to provide your license, you have to sign a waiver, and then you have to do a video training course on range operations and safety procedures and how to handle your firearm when you're coming and going from the facility. This is just a picture of a gentleman filling out a waiver on a tablet. Then they'll watch the video, and then a range officer will go ahead and escort them to the assigned lane after they've checked in at the range, at the lane, the counter for lane rentals, which looks similar to this. Kind of what it shows here is what an interior of a range looks like. It is a concrete bunker. The ceiling, which we'll have some sides later down the line that kind of show more details of how it's laid out. There are ballistic panels in between each one of the shooting areas, the bays. They have the table where they can place what they're using in front of them. Inside the shooting range, this is more of a technical drawing of it. So you have the stall walls off to the left, you have the safety ceiling, which is steel above you, and then you have the baffles hung periodically down the lanes. All of this prevents a bullet from ever escaping the range. Again, remember that even the lanes are encased in concrete in a grouping, so there is no possibility of anything ever escaping. We've chose to use a rubber trap at this facility for a number of business operation reasons, and then the target can move up and down that lane as desired by the operator inside of the bay. Again, another picture of the quality and standards of what the range will look like. We do have sound mitigation inside of this as well. The back part of the walls are lined, as well as the shooting bays themselves. The only thing different between this picture and the other one that we showed you is we kind of outlined how the range area is shaded in gray, and that's all going to be concrete walls. This is a close-up picture of a rubber trap, which is what we've chosen to use, what I've chosen to use at this facility. This is just a brief diagram of showing how that a, you know, a stray round cannot leave the facility. It would hit those baffles hung from the ceilings and then come down into the rubber This is just another example of a different type of stall wall. The bigger thing I kind of want to lead into is if you look up behind their heads, that is the air intake into the facility's system. So this kind of goes into the HVAC and how it works. The picture that I just pointed out to, those little half-circles behind the individual's heads, is focused up on the left-hand part of this diagram. The range is always kept at a negative air pressure, so that means air is always being pulled into the facility so that no lead, smoke, or other contaminants can leave the range itself. And again, it is all circulated around through the system. Approximately 75% is continuously reused. These are the rooftop units used for the system. There is one dedicated system for the range bays and another for the retail, so they are not cross-used. With the system that I will use, it is a state-of-the-art facility. It is all electronically monitored. This isn't, you know, marking it on your calendar and a reminder comes up. We'll get up-to-date, live information about how full the filters are, if any of the fan motors aren't working. Any of that stuff is shown on the system. Again, this will go and show what a 100-yard bay is going to look like, which this facility will house a gunsmith just, you know, performing his task for whatever the customer needed. This is one of Range Development Services' facilities that was under construction. Just kind of wanted to bring this up. If you notice off to the right, the concrete and the white roof, that is all the range. And again, it is all surrounded in concrete. This is just another picture of how the ranges, the different designs, the target systems used inside of that range. Again, another drawing of a facility of Range Development Services, just to kind of show you the aesthetics that we're going for. This is, as of, stands to now, and we have to go through site plans and everything else through the city. Again, I'm new to this, so please understand, I don't know all the lingo. But this, right now, is the concept as it sits today. I'm sure it will change with the expert opinion of the town. Any questions?
Questions for the applicant?
Yes. Go ahead.
All right, so I have a few, so we can take some turns. All right, so I have a few, so we can take some turns. How often are the shooting lanes reviewed for some kind of damage and fixed?
So, they will be reviewed. Daily walk is part of the range operation system to review the facility and make sure it's safe for commercial users throughout the day.
And I apologize. So I'm pretty familiar with inside, but I'm not, so if, for instance, if one piece of concrete seems to get hit pretty often and it starts to kind of chip away, that's what I'm talking about? Like, I don't understand the upkeep of something like that.
Can we defer that to later? I have a gentleman here from FFL Consultants who would be better able to answer that myself.
Sure. Can I ask some other ones then?
Sure.
So how are the contaminants filtered out?
Through a HEPA filter.
Okay, so it is just, it is a filter and it's...
Correct.
And how and who are notified if that HVA system goes down? You're not going to be here 24/7.
It's all linked to my phone through apps and everything else. I can monitor the facility through my phone from wherever. There will always be an onsite manager who has the permission to shut the facility down. It will be at the best interests of everybody to do that if something goes haywire.
Okay, and then I have just one more. Are there only pistol ranges, or are there any rifle?
The 100-yard bays are for rifles.
Oh, that, that's right, there is a 100-yard bay.
There's four of them.
Oh, okay.
Just to go back to one of your original questions, the concrete walls, sorry, I just, I'm a little nervous, so give me some time to think. If you're standing in a bay and you, if a round goes astray, it's going to glance at the wall, it won't go directly into it. So it technically would not happen.
Okay.
Okay. I have just a few questions. What will be the age limit for participants at the gun range?
The age limits are going to be applicable to the state law. Off the top of my head, I'm going to do hunter-safety courses. I believe that's 14, it might be 13. I have to refresh myself.
Okay.
I haven't looked in since I was a kid in Iowa.
All right.
But I will follow applicable state laws.
Will people who use this facility be required to take out a membership?
No.
Okay. So it's open to the general public?
Correct.
Okay. How will spent rounds be removed from the rubber stopper at the end?
So they are contained in the rubber stopper, and periodically I will have to hire a third-party company to come in and clean that out and mitigate and recycle the lead.
Okay. And there's, are there industry standards for how that's done?
It's done approximately every 70,000 to 80,000 rounds.
Okay.
And that can be monitored by the use of casings, so I know approximately. And not to mention, it's not hard just to walk down to the end of the range, rake back the rubber, and see the distance. The rubber trap itself is three feet thick of recycled rubber materials. So as it, there's a certain level that when it gets to, you know, kind of notice, but generally we just use the spent casings as a measure.
Okay, thank you.
Is this the first time you've ever done this?
Opened a range, yes. I've been in customer service since I was 14, 16, somewhere around in there.
From the point where you seek approval to building, what is the timeline?
From what I understand, and again, when I hired Range Development Services, he promised 18 to 24 months to open the door, and I'm at two and a half years. That might be a better question. I mean, I have to work through the site plans, I have to work through all the building permits. Best guess, 18 months? I don't know for sure.
So the site plan application, general timeframe for a site plan is in that four- to six-month timeframe. By the time it goes through the appropriate review process, that could be done concurrently with a building permit, and then it would be a construction schedule for how long it would take them to construct the building.
Further questions?
So I have one more. I did read in one of the public comments that somebody said something about, and I'm not an expert at noise studies, but that, you know, there was a mention of, I don't want to hear pop, 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 pop all day long, like a trunk slamming. What is the noise, what is the anticipated noise that somebody, say, in the backyard of the closest building could actually hear? Or is that noise going, is that, at that point, are the decibels going to be so muffled by chambers that everything is going to be kind of meshed together?
The goal is to be inaudible at the property line. The person to ask specific questions about decibels and how it relates and how they travel, that would be Jeff with Wave Engineering. He is also here. We can either, he can come up now, I don't know your procedure, or we can wait till the question answered at the end.
No, he could come up and answer the commissioner's question. If you could just give your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, commissioners. Jeff Polkowski. Company is Wave Engineering, 1100 West Littleton Boulevard, Littleton, Colorado.
Thank you. Question again?
So, if I'm a neighbor in this property and I have the closest house to it, Penn, maybe Penn Guest Way, my backyard possibly backs up to that parcel's, if I'm sitting outside in the summer, am I going to hear anything from the range?
Right. Our goal for the design, of the building which is not designed yet, is that that would be, the gunshots would be inaudible. I only say goal, and any acoustical consultant will always hedge when he uses the term inaudible because everybody's sensitivities are different. What you hear is dependent on what else is going on around you, but our absolute goal is to have that inaudible.
Okay, so, Paul, I think you said it was about 200 feet from the nearest homes, so we've still got an additional 200-foot buffer?
At least. That's correct. That's from property line to property line.
Okay.
This is a cutout done by the engineering firm. It shows the distance from, maybe it's not...
We've got that.
Yeah, the image that is shown on the screen there is in your packet this evening.
And then one other question I have is, what kind of hours do you anticipate the facility being open?
Ballpark right now, nine to nine.
Okay.
Possibly less on Sundays. It's going to be ironed out in the details as we look forward.
Okay.
Since we have the engineer, the difference between just general noise in a commercial area and the pop, 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 that would be coming from a gun range, does the fact that it's that sudden noise, does that make a difference in terms of perception generally?
Yes.
In an engineering point? And how is that going to be taken care of by, if it's inaudible, is it inaudible because it's just, it's drowned out by the other noises around it? Or is it inaudible because it's actually not escaping past the property line? Does that make sense of my question?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
And I guess the answer is, the reason is some of both, but your first question about the pop, 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 and you're right, we call that an impulsive-type noise rather than a steady noise. And those noises do tend to stand out to someone and be more noticeable to someone than a steady noise like the din of traffic or something like that. The way we deal with that is, is when, you know, we've measured the ambient sound levels that are out there now, and will continue. And so we not only know what the average sound level is, we know what it is when it gets as quiet as it gets during the day. And so those are the periods we're going to be designing around, and we'll, taking into account that it's an impulsive noise, are getting those decibel levels down even lower than we might if it were something steady, so that it is inaudible.
Well, I read in your report that you actually, like, assigned a five, five-decibel penalty because it's an impulsive noise.
Yeah, I referred to the state of Colorado and to some other jurisdictions that when setting noise limits in codes and regulations will sometimes apply a penalty of five decibels to impulsive-type noises. So that if, say, the limit were ordinarily 50 decibels for an impulsive-type noise, it might, it would be 45 then instead. So they require you to mitigate the noisy level even lower.
Okay.
And that's the reason they do that.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more noise question, so hang on. So there was something, again, in the packet or in one of the public comments about band practice being over, possibly at the Echo Park during the day of the first sound study. Has that second sound study been done?
No, the second sound study would be required at the time of the site plan to ensure that the design and construction methods and materials would meet the proposed condition recommended in staff's report.
Further questions for the applicant?
I do have one more.
Okay.
Noise question. So I see in one of the conditions of approval, number three, it says that the applicant shall evaluate the noise levels between the first three months of operations and the first 12 months of operations. So my question would be, after that 12 months, let's say I'm one of the neighbors and I do notice a sound, what is the procedure? Do I, is that a code complaint, or how would that be handled?
Sure, it would, it would come through, most likely through a code compliance request, and then there would, it would go through the evaluation process for determining if there was a violation or not. Probably the operator would be heavily involved with that in terms of monitoring and sifting through the details of what that complaint was.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions for the applicant? Anything, brother gentleman?
Tom Brinkman, Parker Homestead Development. I've been taking notes and I wanted to add or answer a couple of questions, both from Commissioner Rodel that we didn't fully answer. Is the location of the building set? Yes, the location of the building is set. Will it shift inches? Probably. Will it shift feet? No. It is set on the plan that we have shown. You can see the cross-section here, and that's how we view it, sitting next to the adjacent neighborhood. This shows it as approximately 200 feet. I think the exact number is 203.8 feet to the property line. That is to the, from the back of the building. If you were to go across Newland Gulch, I believe our number is at 540 feet to the property line over there. Second thing I did want to clarify was that you had a question regarding the sound study. We did do that sound study, or Jeff ran that sound study over two weekends in five days. So I was not aware of the comment about band practice, but it was over an extended period of time, so that, to the extent there was a couple hours of band practice, this was two weekends in five days that the sound study was averaged over. And finally, I want to just say affirmatively, because I don't think we really have said it, we have a commitment that the neighbors will have quite enjoyment of their property. And to that end, our commitment is that we will not be louder than 45 decibels measured 25 feet from the property line behind the building. Jeff got into a little bit, and Paul showed the chart of what 50 decibels sounds like. Our commitment is 45 decibels, taking into account the five decibels that you talked about and saw in the study for that, for that impact noise. So continued quiet enjoyment, it is what we are guaranteeing. It is not just a wish, it is what we are going to build to. And that is further followed up by our commitment to do a sound study once the community, once the building is up, and then again, once more within the first 12 months of operation, to the extent that there's even more people there, six months down the road than there was at the opening, we've committed to monitoring again at that point and also making any corrections. And further, staff has made it a condition that if we haven't hit that 45 decibels, we cease operation until that, that change has occurred.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Thank you, sir.
I appreciate your time.
Further questions for Paul?
Paul, I noticed that you specifically requested daily numbers as well as average numbers for the sound study. Could you speak to that a little bit on why you did that?
Sure. Sure, it was intended to not only determine the existing ambient noise, but any exceptions to that background noise, i.e. a lawnmower, a dog barking, band practice, that sort of stuff. So it was intended to identify both.
Thank you.
Further questions? What?
Anything done?
No, that's fine. All right, we've come to the part of the meeting where there's the public testimony, and let me just remind people again that you have three minutes to make your presentation and that we like those to be respectful of each other and respectful of the commissioners and staff. And it helps, because we've all had a long week here with the time change and blizzards and, could anything else have happened this week? Anyway, that you just, you know, make your comments, I guess, to the point, and then we will call people to this side right over here by sections. And so we'll say, well, anybody who wants to make a comment out of this section, you come over and you kind of line up over there, and Paul or somebody will take your card and you come up to the dais. And it just, we found that it works pretty well and keeps it moving. And so we will, since this is a public hearing, we will open it to public comment. And why don't we start with this section over here? Anyone that wishes to make a section over here, just walk around the back and come So you're first in line. I think they're on the back table. You want to come on ahead, sir? Okay, sure, yeah. Why don't you come ahead? And again, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Andrew Copeland, C-O-P-L-A-N-D, 6544 South Trailway Circle, Parker. So this is a business, you don't want to go to Castle Rock, I would say, nor is it something you want to have to drive to Castle Rock for. So I think it's probably best that it stays in Parker. And also, I think that a facility like this would provide training, it would provide education and practice, which ensures much more safety within the gun weaponry training. So basically, these are my comments, but I'm in favor of it.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
My card is here.
Okay, that's fine. But if you just state your name again, we'll match it to the card.
Sure. I'm Shannon Fitzgerald, and I live at 11817 Diorio Street in Parker, which is in the heirloom community. So thank you for your time, commissioners. I previously sent some letters to Paul regarding why I feel the back 40 location doesn't meet the, all of the nine criteria for the special use permit. I focused on three in particular, which is harmony and compatibility with the character of the surrounding areas and neighborhood, will not cause significant air, water, or noise pollution, and will not otherwise be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the residents. So if you haven't already read my letters, I just respectfully request that you have. I won't go through everything in the interest of time, but I wanted to focus specifically on noise pollution, since that's obviously a concern that Paul's group shared as well. Specifically, where the location is built is obviously very close to residents in the Newland Gulch community, and we were told during the owners and builders' planning meeting that the sound of the gunshots firing would sound like car doors closing, as I think one of the commissioners alluded to. I don't know what's changed between then and now as far as how they're going to guarantee that those sounds not be heard. But I imagine unless they commit to being soundproof before the site is approved, that the sound of hundreds or thousands of gunshots a day would really cause significant noise pollution. In addition to that being disruptive and annoying at best, there is at least one... In addition to that being disruptive and annoying at best, there is at least one girl who lives in that neighborhood who was subject, she was in high school at Columbine when they had those shootings, and she has PTSD from that and has represented in a letter to the town planning group as well, that if she hears those gunshots, it will trigger her PTSD. And I really do think that that interferes with quiet enjoyment, if only for one resident. In addition to that, you know, the level of the noise constantly, you know, going on and on, is just, it's not the same type of noise that one might hear from the stadium there. It's not a peaceful noise, it's not the sound of children laughing and people hurrying, you know, when there's a good play in a game, for example. And I know that these folks have argued that while there's enough noise there already, this is not going to make a material difference, but I would argue there really is enough noise over there already, we don't need any more. So I just wanted to focus on that as far as one of the criteria, a couple of the criteria is not being made as a result of the noise pollution.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Jeff Butler. I live at 10737 Kimball Street here in Parker. And I just want to speak on behalf of, I'm very much in favor of the range, I think it'd be a great addition to Parker. One of the reasons I think this, because the whole area we live in is growing a whole lot and there's just limited facilities you have right now, as it is. If I do want to go practice, I do have to go either, you know, shoot all that Jordan into Centennial or down into Castle Rock. That can take a lot of time, there's a lot of challenges there. So I think it's just the need, there's greater need for the number of people that would like the service. And I think it'd be great to have one facility here in Parker. And then the other thing I think is great about this, it's not just firearms, it's the archery range. My daughter enjoys shooting, arrow-shooting archery, but there's no real good place in Parker to practice. I mean, you can't use the parks, there's no place really you can go. My backyard really is a terrible place because it's not big enough, you know, it's too much in danger of an arrow going over the fence. I did try to have her shooting towards the house, I put, you know, two four-by-eight sheets of particle board up, even with that hole eight by eight feet, I still wound up with a couple of holes in my sighting. So that kind of stuff. So having this in Parker for her to go to would be wonderful. And my son's younger, he's interested in that as well. In fact, even Parker Rec offers archery lessons and wants to take, which my daughter took, he wants to take that. You learn it, but there's no real way to keep practicing, to keep those skills up that you've paid, that you've done your practice on, that you've learned. And then as far as, I do want to address the noise. I've been going to firing ranges since early 90s. The ranges that are built today are a far cry from what they used to be. They are so much better designed, the noise mitigation on them is fantastic. They're nowhere near as noisy today, the new ones, the ones up, you know, in Castle Rock that haven't been built, the one that's up in Centennial, it is so much better than what I remember, you know, that used to be built. So I think, you know, this is a fantastic idea and I'd really like to see it permitted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name's Ian Alfner, I live at 15750 East Indian Brook Circle. I guess, you know, talking a little bit about it, I think, you know, it's not about guns or Second Amendment rights. You know, it's about granting use by special review, of which you got to hit the nine criteria. And I'm here to talk about two criteria you can't hit and can't be met by the applicant. Number one, the use isn't going to be in harmony and compatible with the other existing character and surrounding uses in the neighborhood. And number two, adding this use will be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the present or future inhabitants of the town. The gun range with a retail sales component of guns and ammunition will not be harmonious or similar to the existing character or the surrounding uses as it exists today or for which it was planned, due to the extremely close residential properties, a large sports stadium, a nearby existing church, a future daycare that's under construction, and a senior facility, as well as a nearby elementary school that my kids are going to go to, Gold Rush, and numerous parks and trails. Use would also add burden to the Parker police force to protect the community against such smash and grabs and burglaries of weapons and ammunition, as well as potential high-speed chases that have happened recently. The type of referenced crime has become increasingly popular for thieves and a strain on public safety resources, the ATF throughout the state and the United States. A simple Google search of Colorado gun store smash and grabs will provide you with ample articles to reference and prove this point. In order to make this point clear, I'm just going to read about 10 of them that I pulled up recently by that Google search, okay? Parker Police Investigating Gun Store Robbery. Cement Truck Used in Smash and Grab at Lakewood Gun Shop. Gun, Colorado Gun Store Smash and Grab Burglaries. Littleton Pawn Shop Gun Robbery Reward. ATF Bust Sophisticated. Denver Area Gun Store Burglary Ring, 17 Indicted for 400 Stolen Guns. Green Mountain Gun Store Targeted by Robbers. Crooks Steal Guns From Colorado Springs Shooting Range. Area Gun Store Burglaries Not Impulse Crimes. Smash and Grab Burglars Drive Stolen Jeep Into Building. 500 Gun Store Burglaries Expected This Year. ATF Looking For A Man Who Stole 13 Guns From Falcon Store. You get the point.
Time's up, Mr. Alfner. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jeff Johnson, I live at 22898 Addington Place here in Parker. I've been at this podium before a couple times for several different issues. One of those was a use by special review where I came to understand how that process works. There are nine criteria that are to be met and planning council, the planning department makes recommendations and then council reviews those recommendations and they decide whether the nine criteria are met or not. In that particular case, I did not agree with what the council came to decide. I didn't believe a drug rehab facility in my neighborhood was harmonious. I didn't think that people coming and going all night was good for the safety of the neighborhood. I didn't think that the attics recovering 75 yards from playground was safe. But I understood the process and I respected the process. And I respected that the decisions were being made based on the merits of the application and no further criteria. I came out on the other side of that one. On this matter, I support the facility because I realize there's going to be many people that don't agree with it or that have differing opinions about whether they would like this in Parker. But the merits of which you guys are making your determination have all been met. And this applicant has been through the most strenuous review that I've seen in 20 years in Parker. And I'm connected to the whole development kind of world, so I get to follow a lot of this. I haven't seen anything like this before. And it almost felt to me, as I watched the process, like there might be, you know, some hope that the applicant might just go, you know, this is too much, I'm going to back away. But they were steadfast and they hired more consultants and they put more money into the application to make sure that they can be compliant. So as you guys make your decision tonight, I challenge you to make the decisions based on the merits of the application and what the applicant has done to meet those criteria and nothing more and nothing less. So with that said, I thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir.
Richard Rassburger, 10474 Shore Pine. The mind can imagine happiness and fear. And education is the difference, and that's what this facility will give to the community. If something is there, you can only see it, and you can only see it with your eyes open, but if it isn't there, you can only just imagine it. That's why the imagination, that's why imagining things is so much more real sometimes. I, sort of following up on the previous speaker, I've seen a lot that this group has gone through and I just want to show my support for them.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
My name's Nate Becker, I'm at 15895 Savory Circle here in Parker, a couple blocks away from facilities being proposed. Similar to many of their speakers, I'm fully supportive of approving this facility for Parker. I think it's something that Parker needs. As other speakers have already pointed out, the sole decision is based on the nine criteria. Whether we like it, whether we support it, whether we think something else should be there is irrelevant. Has this individual applicant met or can they meet the nine criteria? That is the only thing that can be considered in making this decision. And based on everything that's been presented, based on the application, I think this applicant has gone above and beyond to meet those criteria. And I don't think there's a question on whether they have been or met. They're meeting their criteria and they're exceeding their criteria to make everyone happy. And I want us to make sure that we focus on that when making this decision. One of the other things I'd like to point out, directly from the town master plan, is the long-term economic well-being of the town is fundamental to its future. Therefore, we will encourage a variety of employment opportunities and promote unique local businesses. Again, that is directly from the master plan for the town of Parker. I can't think of a business that meets this requirement more than this. It's a local resident, it's a locally-owned business. We're not putting in a chain restaurant, we're not putting in anything like that. This is a unique local business that's coming into Parker, that's going to provide us revenue, it's going to provide sales tax, it's going to provide employment opportunities, as well as by a local resident. The last thing I'd like to point out is, there's a lot of comments about noise. And I think one of the challenges that everyone has to understand is that you purchased a home next to a residential, commercially-zoned property that was zoned since, commercial since 2010. Everyone who purchased or lives in that area understood that there would be commercial properties coming into that location. Every single commercial property is going to carry its own unique noises. You can have a gas station there, you're going to deal with the noise. You can put a subway there, you can put any type of retail establishment, you can put an alley back there with dumpsters, you can have delivery trucks coming back and forth in that alley all day long. No matter what you do, there is going to be noise. The question is, is it acceptable noise? Is it below the normal decibel level that is required in the master plan or in the special criteria? And if it is, it has to be approved. Whether you like that noise, or prefer the beeping of a delivery truck, the slamming of dumpsters, you know, people talking on their cellphones behind a business is irrelevant. If the decibel is where it needs to be, then we've met the criteria. And that's what I want us to consider. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, thank you for having me and thank you for hearing me. My name is Chris Opfer, I live at 11993 Triple Crown Drive here in Parker. First of all, I'm a father of two young boys, both who will eventually attend Gold Rush, just like any other individual here. I'm a husband, a local business owner, a husband of another local business owner, and I'm also a retired deputy district attorney for Douglas Counties and Arapahoe Counties. So I have a different perspective, I think, here than many. I'm also a firearms owner. There were two quick things that I wanted to address, and I think this goes to the sound questions and the health and safety. And I understand that, and health and safety is something that I actually dedicated my life to. As far as the sound, as another gentleman mentioned, anytime you go to a new range, a modern range, you don't hear it outside. Once you get inside and you get close to the firing range, you can hear it, but outside it's not audible. And that's just in my anecdotal experience. In regards to the smash and grabs, that's actually something I have some very unique experience with, especially, like I said, being a prosecutor here, they're, what new buildings are doing is they are creating, and I've seen some of the plans here, they're creating pylons and making it so even a cement truck doesn't get inside. Thieves will always try, thieves will break into homes, they'll break into cars. Unfortunately, theft is something that exists everywhere in our society, even here in Parker, regardless of the building. I just, obviously, if you can't tell, I am for the range. And not directly for myself, but actually for the community as a whole. And this actually goes to the health and safety. As the proponent of this pointed out, there are many, many more people that are acquiring firearms. There are more firearms in the United States than there are people now. And we live in a relatively conservative community, a relatively conservative county, and I think it's safe to say there's a lot of firearms in this county. The question is, is do we want to educate those people? And if we do educate those people and train those people, are we safer as a community? I'll tell you, I would rather live by people that are trained, even if they own a firearm, that are trained than are untrained. That's when accidents happen. And that, but that's what this facility is actually going to provide, is a certain type of training. So it actually goes to that point of health and safety, but from a different perspective. And I'm sure you've received many negative letters as well, talking about guns, and I don't want to get into that necessarily, but I think it's always an interesting topic. Regardless, though, I think also with the archery, it is something that specifically teaches dedication, training, technique, and to young individuals. So that's another thing that we get to provide. So regardless of the emotions surrounding this building, I'm asking you all to approve this. I think it's good for Parker, I think it's good for our community, and it provides something that's safer than what we have otherwise. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Just one second, sir. People in the middle section, if you can kind of do it quietly, if you want to make a comment, you can come over here to this section. Thank you. Yeah, that section. Sorry, sir, just want to get things moving.
Oh, good. My name's Rob Wall, I live at 38636 County Road 5, Elizabeth. I just wanted to voice my absolute opinion that we should have this. It's all about having education, it's all about having a safe place to practice. And new to Parker, I lived in Denver for 30 years, it's, there is no place out here that is a state-of-the-art facility like this. I've shot at places like this in other cities and it is the only place I'd want to be. I've been to some firing ranges outside, there are a few nice ones further east, or excuse me, further west, but knowing who Ryan is and talking to him, I believe he'll make this safe and quiet and do everything that you require him to do. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Jeff Alberti, I live at 11731 South Flower Mound Way, and I actually look right across the field at this, I live right across Chambers Road. One of the things that doesn't seem to have been mentioned is the economic value of this property and actually what it does to the city. It actually drops home values by an average of 3.7% according to Realtor.com. They did a study of 100 metropolitan areas and determined that, and they did a comparison of areas with and without them, and they determined it did actually, once it was installed, dropped the value of all the homes nearby by at least 3.7%. Just to give you an idea of what that equates to, on, if you take a $500,000 home, which all these homes in this area are at least $500,000 typically, some of them are ranging all the way up to $900,000 plus. But just on a $500,000 home, that means that homeowners in the location around this facility are going to drop in value by about $18,500 per home. Now, I've lived in this home for 10 years, so it's well before this property is considered a commercial. We had no intention of living near a commercial property and did not know this was intended when we bought our home. So that, if you multiply that out, that loss in home value on just 500 homes, which is easily within the range of this neighborhood, because there are four neighborhoods, well, within very close proximity to it, that's a loss in value of nine and a quarter million dollar loss in values to just the immediate homeowners here. The economic impact to the city as well is that you're going to find that the property tax values on these properties is going to drop. And what that means is the city is going to be out about $65,550 just on those 500 homes. In order for the property to make up that value, they'd have to have on sales taxes on the facility, they had to make, have at least $1.68 million in sales per year on the goods that are sold. So obviously, the services are not suited to the sales tax rate. That seems quite high, so we're looking at a net negative for the city itself, as well as the direct impact on the homeowners there. Even though I think they have a great plan here of potentially, hopefully mitigating the noise and other concerns out here, we feel like the immediate community here, the loss in value, I mean, is going to drive homeowners away and that we'll probably have to move potentially just to maintain our home value. And we don't want to leave Parker, we've been here for a long, a lot longer than this property's even been zoned here. And just to give a comparison, the drop in my property taxes, if you run the numbers, it would take me 141 years to make up that $18,000 loss in value. So it seems like a disproportionate impact on the community around it, when there could be other properties be other properties that could be there that could increase the value of our homes and our community. We just don't see that based on national studies. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
That's very high.
You didn't pull that down.
Okay, cool. Hi. My name is Logan Samuels. I live at 9668 Paper Flower Drive in Parker. I'm 17. I'm a senior at Legend High School. I have a younger sister who's going to be a freshman at Legend this fall. I'm also the future of Parker and the future of the United States as a whole. And as a student, my Friday nights should be filled with doing homework, hanging out with friends, and of course, football at Echo Park Stadium. It's a tradition to go down and support our team, but frankly, I don't think I would feel safe based on past experiences I've had, living on the East Coast and specifically right near the Sandy Hook area. So I don't think I'd feel safe in going to an area with multiple firearms, or multiple weapons, firearms or otherwise, that can be a part of smash and grabs, putting myself and the lives of my sister and all other students in the area at risk. And I'm not opposed to a shooting range where education and safety is number one, number one priority. I'm opposed to there being one so close to where I'm supposed to be having fun. So to be quite frank, it's not harmonious with the people or the students in that area, and it never will be. So suffice to say, I'm opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
My name is Justin Salmon. I live at 16480 East Hollow Horn Avenue here in Parker. First, I'd like to just say that shooting is a sport. I wanted to get involved in competitive shooting. I need a place to practice. It is a sport, just like they claim math competitions is a sport. Have no military or law enforcement background. I'm not a Second Amendment or NRA fanatic. I'm an average citizen. I do carry a concealed carry. I like to play, have a place to practice, so if ever I need to use it, I'm confident I know there are concerns about the gun range close to homes, and I'm a homeowner. That's the last thing I would want to have, is something noisy that I can hear. So I kind of just did my own little research. I went to Centennial Gun Club with no expectations. I parked in the parking lot, no gunshots. I got out of my car, no gunshots. Surely, I'm going to walk in that front set of doors and hear them. Nope. Second set, which is the big lobby area, you can hear them, some. But it wasn't, even in, it wasn't that loud. I walked outside and I happened to notice a brand-new Holiday Inn, four stories, millions of dollars, lots of customers who want a good night's sleep. Why would they build a hotel next to a gun range that, in my guesstimate, was about 50 yards away? By comments tonight, I believe the gun range is going to be about 66 yards away. So I called the Holiday Inn and asked them. They didn't know what I was doing. I said, "Hey, do you ever hear gunshots? If I stayed there, am I going to..." Oh, let me get some direct quotes from the... "We don't even hear the gunshots because it's an enclosed range. As far as I know, I haven't, we haven't had any complaints from our guests from gunshots. Our noise issues, if any, is from the jets from Centennial Airport." And they did verify the range was built before the hotel. So again, investors, customers aren't going to want to stay there if they hear the "pop, pop, 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 pop." It just doesn't happen. So that's a fact. I encourage anyone to do the same thing that I did. I've had no hearing issues. I've never been told I have hearing issues. Our town is growing. Many buildings are being built, both wanted and unwanted. And please, please do not deny our citizens a place to go learn, practice, and shoot our guns. Last comment on the being close to a school concern. If I had a kid, I would love a legit shooting range. How many people would become running to that school that know how to shoot and take down an intruder, maybe even before Parker Police get there, although Parker Police are quick?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can I have your grant?
Thank you, sir.
My name is Johnson Cobb. I live at 11510 Juniper Lane here in Hidden River. A longtime Parker resident. I raised my family here. And I am in support of this local gun range because I'm in total agreement with a number of the speakers that education is a good thing, and I'd much rather have an educated gun owner than one that is just a gun owner that's uneducated. People are dangerous. I understand there are two sides to every argument, and I certainly can appreciate the situation that a lot of people are concerned about more guns, more guns. But once again, I agree with education, and I think that having a local facility that offers education, that is family-friendly, my, like I say, I raised my family here. We enjoy going to a gun range and being able to do practice as a family. And I think it's, my girls hunt, my son hunts. We've been through the hunter education programs. And the education aspect of this facility, I think, is a real plus, and it's nice to have something that will be local. I was a scoutmaster, and I think that having a year-round facility where scouts can work on merit badges, whether or not it's marksmanship or archery, is, would be a plus. So once again, I'm in favor of the approval of this range. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Dennis Hopper. I live at 6722 Chalet Circle in Parker. I'm here, the same reason the gentleman just spoke about. I'm a scoutmaster of a local troop, 868. I'm an ex-army airborne ranger veteran. I've been around guns. My son's been around guns since he's 11 years old. Most of the older scouts have to start at 14. They learn safety. They learn understanding of weapons. A lot of these scouts, these merit badges that they earn, it would be a great place to have here so they could get this. There is rifle, there's archery, there's shotgun. These scouts, they ultimately hopefully make it to Eagle, like my son has. And then at one point in time, most Eagles go on to serve our military. From there, a lot of them, if they didn't serve our military, go in law enforcement. From there, they go into public service and become leaders of our community. One has even become a president. So I fully support this gun range for these scouts and for the citizens and for this county because I too am a member of Centennial Gun Range, and I'd like to have my money stay right here in Parker. I too go to Chatfield and fire with my son, and I'd rather it stay here in Parker. Again, I fully support it. I think it's a good thing. And I don't hear any shots outside of Centennial Gun Range either. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Dr. Christina Hespel. I live at 10506 Meadow Run. I'm a professor at the University of Denver and a researcher, and so I brought some research to you. Indoor ranges play an important role, as you've heard tonight, in educating people about the proper handling of firearms in a safe, hands-on learning environment, which is in alignment with the health and safety component about which people have spoken earlier. Archery as a sport is growing in popularity in Colorado. According to the U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission, archery is one of the safest sports in the country, actually safer than soccer, golf, and baseball. And indoor shooting ranges are growing in popularity with women. Research by the National Sporting Goods Association indicates that the number of women who target shoot has increased by 50% in the last 10 years. Female hunters have increased 42% according to the same study. And the 4H Shooting Sports Program is the most popular 4H program in the state of Colorado with more than 3,500 young people who are participating, learning about the safe and responsible use of both archery equipment and firearms, which they could do in this particular site. Many parents report that spending time with their family at a shooting range ensures that their children are properly educated on gun safety. The proposed site is buffered on all sites from residential use, in addition to extensive sound abatement, as you've heard earlier, to accommodate users of the facility as well as neighbors. A sound engineering study was conducted, consistent with the owner's intent that the area residents would not be disturbed by additional sound from this facility. It would provide a new and unique option in the, in this particular neighborhood, which is increasingly popular for outdoor sports enthusiasts. This is aligned with the town of Parker's careful planning that has resulted in extensive athletic options for residents, including the network of trail facilities in the area. The applicant is interested in enhancing opportunities for community members, being a good neighbor, and has been mindful throughout the planning process of specific requirements by the town of Parker. A study of national exemplary ranges has been conducted, as well as those that have been negatively affecting neighborhoods. Building this facility in Parker would additionally bring both tax revenue and increased employment opportunities to our, to our town. As the mother of four sons and the grandmother of eight grandchildren, I support the approval of this facility in our community. Thanks very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I'm Dr. Douglas Hespel. I live at 10506 Meadow Run. I am not a gun owner. Why would I be here in support of this amazing project? I grew up with pocket knives and BB guns and archery and didn't encounter firearms until I was in the military, at which point I did attain my marksman level. But I still don't own any guns. Because I'm opposed to them, no, quite the contrary. I think that my wife, who didn't talk about it, grew up hunting in the woods in northern Illinois with her dad. So we're very open and willing and look forward to having the opportunity to purchase those, if those what we want for ourselves or those in our community. I've also worked as a, I'm a retired teacher, principal, and superintendent, and have worked often over the last 12 years with first responders in both the Chicago area and also in Clear Creek County. And so have an understanding of certainly law enforcement and know their interest in making sure that we are educating our electorate, our students, in the use of handguns or whatever weapons they choose. But my second point about being here tonight is, who is the person that's doing this? Ryan Buswell is someone I trust. I would trust with my family, with my children. I've known him for five years. He's an active community member who is supporting people all the time. I found him at 11:30 last night plowing my driveway. So he's the kind of person you want to have in a facility like that where he's going to be managing well, he's going to be concerned about all who comes in, he's going to look for the right and he's going to look for the wrong. And he comes with a strong background, certainly in guns, and understands their role as well as archery. So I hope you will consider this as, and also Ryan's efforts to put this together, we've talked a lot over the last few years. He's in earnest. He's passionate about this. This isn't something he's just going to rush in and rush out. This is a life commitment he's making. So I hope that in your consideration, you will think of these words. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Mark Gasper, 42241 Broken Horn Circle, Parker, Colorado. Thank you for the time. I'll keep it short. It looks like a full house. So I agree with many of the points that have been already said this evening. First and foremost, I'm in favor of the proposal, and I would like to see the back-party range developed. It'd provide local money by local resident, giving back to the community. It would provide a safe spot for myself and my sons to go shoot, to learn the basics and advanced shooting techniques, so that would be available in the classes. I'd also agree with, you know, some of the things around the safety. And one of the different aspects that I want to bring to that is, I live out east of Lowways, and I have land where, in theory, I could shoot. Many of my neighbors do shoot outside. I hear that noise. It doesn't bother me, even five acres, 10 acres away. The thing that worries me more is an air bolt out there might impact livestock, pets, family, or it could cause a wildfire. I know it doesn't seem like it today, but the summer's coming. It'll be hot and it'll be dry as usual. So if we can get just a few more people from out, further out east, local to Parker, shooting in a safe place and a facility, that'd be a load off my mind. Additionally, I'd like to support our Boy Scouts as well as our 4H members, who also do a lot of the local shooting sports. Having both archery and handguns and long guns available would be a big asset for a number of those children organization. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Name is Greg Lindsey, 19415 East Arciero Creek Place. I'm here to support the gun range. I, myself, I work in the area around Centennial Gun Club, and so I'm around there quite often. And I can tell you, as others have said, there is no sound audible from the outside. And it's a modern gun range that'd be comparable to what they're being proposed today. Your older gun ranges, yeah, they're much louder, but what you see now, that's not a problem. As far as security issues, the newer gun ranges, they do a lot more measures. There are a lot of the smash and grabs you see are typically of strip mall gun shops, stuff like that, that don't have a lot of engineering time put into security. Someone did try to break into Centennial Gun Club one time. They tried, but that's as far as they got. As long as the developer does something comparable here with the Parker Police we have here, it should not be ever an issue with security. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm Robert Hamm, 11203 Lutigo Lane. First off, I would like to say that I believe that this facility is actually in full compliance with the, with the surrounding area. When you take a look at the screen up on top there, you have the football stadium, you have baseball stadium, you have Hess Reservoir. There's all sorts of sports facilities in that general area, and I think that this would be a great addition, having a shooting range in there. And again, regarding sound, I am an archer, not a gun owner, and so it's not only just for the young. And I do agree, I think that it's a fantastic sport. And being an archer, obviously, I would not want to have firearms discharged while I'm trying to shoot my bow. And, you know, after talking with Ryan and hearing the types of measures that they're planning on installing in the facility, I trust that I will be able to do so in peace. In addition to being an archer, I'm also a musician, and I'm well familiar with the, you know, state-of-the-art of the fantastic achievements in soundproofing. And I do believe that I will not be disturbed when I, when I'm, when I'm shooting the bow. And I don't believe that, you know, that the classrooms in the other facilities that are inside the facility will actually be, be able to hear that, that muffled noise as well. And outside, I think it will be absolutely miniscule, if at all, that those sounds are going to be able to escape. And regarding property value, you know, I don't believe that the presence of a shooting range will actually have any more of an impact on the value of the homes than the, than the sports stadium currently has that resides right in that same neighborhood. In fact, I think that the presence of a shooting range may actually entice some people to move there instead. And in addition to that, I think that some of the lower property values were associated with external rains that were not on, and, you know, they were not indoors, if I, if I remember the stories that I read correctly. And regarding school safety, yeah, I am, you know, students are, 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 are future. Douglas County Schools did have the opportunity to review the plans, and they had the opportunity to reject the plans, and they chose not to. They, they appreciated it and that they are in support of the plans. So I believe if, if the school district does not discount this opportunity, then I don't think that the, that the town should either. The only downside I see to this chosen location is that it is not actually in my neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kevin Wilson from 15751...
Kevin Wilson from 15751 East Meadow Vista Circle. I'm primarily concerned with the possibility of lead particulate pollution. And so I really would caution the committee that they look at those numbers more carefully because I find it a little bit hard to believe. And so I think some numbers are being played with there. But I can't say that I've looked at them in any detail, other than that. What I would say is that I think that essentially, even if they do meet those EPA standards, the EPA standards are for industrial types of outputs, and so you're still putting an industrial type output measure really close to a neighborhood. And I don't think we want our children to be breathing lead, yeah, which can harm them in some ways worse than a gun. I think the other thing, too, is I was a little bit confused about the noise myself. So maybe it is going to be really quiet, but you have to be really careful. And if you add 40 decibels to 50 decibels, you hit, you've almost hit 90 decibels, or you've hit 90 decibels and maybe even 100. The slide that was shown over here said that 100 decibels is loud. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I think they can, yeah, ratchet it back for you. There you go.
Great, thank you. My name is Erica Elmore. I live at 15577 East Maiden Hair Lane. I live in the community affected by this facility. I'm directly impacted by this business, not just because I live across the street, but by the fact that my children will attend events at Echo Park Stadium. This facility is not in harmony with the community. I would like to point out that this facility is within 500 feet of a school-owned property. That's at minimum. And also wanted to point out about the sound study, that was not band practice, that was band day. At least eight hours' worth of multiple bands from across the state playing, playing in the stadium and playing in the parking lot. So this is more than just an outlier to that study. I wanted to point out on this site plan that is on the E-Tracket website, A is the gun range, and across the street, school buses. Many school buses, this is where the bands play, excuse me, bands practice at a football game. The flag girls are out here, the drill teams out here practicing, things like that. So I don't, what is, everyone is focused on is what goes on inside this facility and not all the things that cannot be controlled outside of this facility. I ask, I urge the planning commission to please recognize that this belongs in an industrial location as previously approved. There was another gun range approved off a 20-mile road in an industrial location surrounded by other warehouse buildings. Their proposal states, "You strive to be a good neighbor, but you can't control anyone when they leave. We don't invite the unknown into our neighborhood. There are no laws in Parker's Code to regulate how firearms are carried from the building to their car." And I want to be clear, I understand that training is critical to gun ownership. Too often, gun owners do not know how to properly handle and store their weapons. I am a proponent of the Be Smart Gun Storage Program. We have submitted in multiple emails to the board and to the town council, multiple statistics and articles provided showing the crime and robberies from other gun stores. Almost 8,000 firearms were stolen in 2017. This is an increase of 133% since 2013. Those stats are from the ATF. As for sound, you cannot compare the sound of a football game or a track meet to the sound of gunshots. Per Parker Code, this does not meet the requirements for a public nuisance noise. Next, how do they plan to maintain the costly HVA systems? I do hope he plans to maintain ownership, because what happens when a new owner comes in? Are they going to maintain these high standards that they've set? And just again, why would we invite the unknown into our neighborhood and risk the safety of those outside the building? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Emily Suyat, and I live at 15608 Cristallo Drive in Parker. I have two teenagers, a 17-year-old and a 14-year-old. One goes to Chaparral and one goes to Sierra. They both go to games at Echo Park Stadium. I am fine with the idea of a gun range in Parker, and I appreciate that Back Forty intends to teach safety lessons and focuses on education. I think that's really important. I just think that this is the wrong location. I was recently at the gun range in Castle Rock, and it was in an industrial area. I truly believe that's the appropriate place to be. So in my opinion, Back Forty in this particular location violates Use Criteria Number Nine, that it will not otherwise be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the present or future inhabitants of the town. It seems common sense to me that adding more guns to a populated area within 200 feet of a residential area and 500 feet of school property, as well as an area filled with inexperienced drivers, my son being one of them, it just seems like we're borrowing trouble. Recently, Plano, Texas had the same issue, come before their planning commission, and they voted against it six to one. And this was because the gun range was within a half mile of a school. The location of Back Forty right now, where in Parker, the proposed location is 500 feet within school property, where there will be band practices, graduations, football games, and school buses. And it will be less than a mile from Gold Rush Elementary. I believe we have, I'll just read from this news article. "Plano Planning Officials on January 7th Denied a Request to Open an Indoor Shooting Range in a Shopping Center Near Plano High School After Residents Express Concern Over Safety of the Children in the Area." Some Plano residents spoke out against the project in the January 7th, and that's 2019, public meetings saying that they were concerned about issues ranging from safety of people in nearby parking lots to the shopping center's location less than a half mile from Vines High School. I believe we have similar, a similar community. Plano is a suburb of Dallas, we're a suburb of Denver, we're both conservative communities. I think we need to really think about this location. I do not dispute the purpose of the gun range, and it looks like a really amazing facility. I just dispute the location. So for that reason, I'm opposed.
Thank you, ma'am. While she's coming up, anyone in this section that would like to speak, if you can kind of quietly work your way over there? Thank you. Yes, ma'am, sorry.
Hi, my name is Amy Camp. I live at 15585 East Maiden Hair Lane. My house is on that map. I will be able to see this gun range from my home, from my front area, and also from my back deck. I, for one, love the sounds of the stadium. It's the sound of our community coming together and cheering on students that are doing great things. And I thank you, Logan, for bringing the voice of the students here. And I think we should look to what do our high school students want when they go to a high school game, where most often they're unsupervised. I also have concerns pertaining to the significant air noise and water pollution. I've read through the proposal, I've done my research on lead poisoning, I have emailed you, and the gun ranges that are the leading cause of lead poisoning. OSHA rarely monitors and regulates the lead levels in gun ranges. Only 201 of 6,000 commercial ranges in the last 10 years were inspected. 86 of those inspected had lead violations, excuse me, 86% of those had lead violations. The acceptable blood levels, lead levels that OSHA has put out is over 40 years old. Even OSHA is saying that it's maybe time to readjust their acceptable lead levels. There is research that says there is no safe lead, level of lead in the body, and numerous gun owners or gun range workers have been poisoned by their work environment, most of them because of ventilation issues. And so I ask, what happens when the HVAC system does not work? What happens when it's too expensive to fix? What happens when workers decide to cut corners, get protocol, or are not trained? What happens when the HVAC filters are never replaced or not properly disposed of? What will happen with the bullet casings and how is the lead disposed of? And what happens when a new owner comes in and decides to cut corners and no longer do the right things? What happens when this building is demolished and exposes us all to the lead contaminants left behind? I'm also concerned about the safety of our area. I heard tonight that thieves will always try, no matter how safe this place is. In 2017, 7,841 guns were stolen from firearm dealers in the United States. That's 133% increase since 2013. And the number of guns stolen was 577, a 70% increase since 2013. That is according to the ATF. On January 3rd, 2019, we awoke to two gun stores being robbed in Douglas County. The second store led to a car chase and a crash in Highlands Ranch. And another attempt was made on June 23rd at the Pony Express here in Parker, where the suspects fled on foot. I'll remind you, this building is 200 feet from our neighborhoods.
Hands up, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Beatrice Sutton, and I'm at 10907 Clifford Court. Thank you, this is my first time at the podium. I want to thank Mr. Buswell for bringing this development to Parker. I'm super excited about this business, and I think it's going to be an asset to the community. A lot have already spoken about the noise level. I just wanted to add that I have been outside of modern indoor range. You can, you know that you cannot hear the shots outside the building. My experience is law-abiding, citizens will go and use the facility, and they also use common sense to not, you know, wear their weapon on them like cowboy days or anything like that. You don't even know what they're carrying most of the time when they walk in and walk out. And that's just from my experience visiting Centennial Gun Club. Also, the air quality, I think modern indoor gun ranges, and like Mr. Buswell's, will have better air quality than we do now in this meeting room. The property value issue, I think people that are, become pay members of a gun range tend to be affluent, and I didn't find any evidence of lower property values for a modern indoor gun range in the area. I think it'll be a good fit. My teenage daughter is excited about the archery, as I am too. And this is going to be a great family outing for my husband and my son, too. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Hi there. My name is Michael Huntune. I'm at 16396 Flint Lot Court in Parker. I'm the father of three small children, six, six, and eight. I'm a longtime firearm owner, and I'm a member at Centennial Gun Club currently, have been for three years. And most of my testimony is anecdotal, and from my own experiences, I can corroborate a lot of the testimonies, a lot of the people that have said about Centennial Gun Club, about the noise, noise levels. Extremely quiet, even inside the gun range, when you're shopping for a gun. As far as the lead particulates, as often as I go, I wouldn't think that I have any problems. I've even been tested by my doctor for lead levels. A newer facility with probably even better technology and better sound control, I can imagine would be even a better place than Centennial's been open for several years now. As far as crime levels in the area, I've never heard of anyone in the area of Centennial having any problem of people carrying guns in and out and around, as they have hundreds of members. It's always busy. There are actually as many and more bank robberies than there are at gun shops around the area in Parker. So probably shouldn't stop going to banks. As far as the criteria that the applicant has given, he's fulfilled all the nine criteria, as others have said before, as long as those criteria are being filled and met, safety levels for environmental and noise are taken care of, then they should be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Gary Ingram, 15271 Outlet Street. If you look at the map at the crosshairs, I'm three houses up from that, right next to the stadium. I'll be 300 yards away from the proposed range, which I hopefully is going to be a range. Obviously, I'm for the range. A lot of things have been brought up and touched on. I appreciate everybody's comments, so I won't have a whole lot to add new, just a couple clarifying things. I definitely invite the city to come out and listen to the stadium during football night or during band practice. My unofficial decibel meter hits 65 to 75 at times, so I think the gun range would be very small compared to that. When we talk about car doors slamming, one thing I don't hear right next to the stadium is any car door slamming. So if the sound is of a car door slamming equivalent to that, I don't think anybody in the houses will hear that. The crime rate that we keep talking about, I'm just curious, alls we're doing is putting out headlines of gun crimes. How is that in relation to other crimes that are happening? Like the gentleman said, or gout about bank robberies, things like that, I don't think gun crimes are any higher for smash and grabs than they are for any other property crimes. The crime stats that we're stating for the FFLs or from the ATF, I am an FFL holder myself, which means I own a small business in my home. I have firearms there. Some things I prefer to keep private, but it's out there. So there's already businesses there. Those stats of guns being stolen from FFL holders include people like me that operate out of their homes, that have their homes broken into and guns stolen from there. I don't have the security systems that they'll have. They'll be much safer than I will be, although I do everything I can. I do have security. Trust me. The only other things I'd like to bring up, one of the things was that all of the stats for property values are in relation to outdoor ranges. I would like to know if there's correlation between gun ranges and mass shootings or any other kind of shootings for that, for people that are questioning the danger at schools or near schools. I don't believe there is any. I've never heard of somebody going directly from a gun range and committing a crime like that. Gun ranges don't have those kinds of people. And the last thing, I appreciate the folks that might have PTSD. Again, things I prefer to keep private, but VA says I got it. Most military people find it very therapeutic, be able to shoot, and will appreciate this range, and will find that very helpful for our health, our well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Calvin Craig. I live at 19614 Culpepper Circle here in Parker, the Country Meadows Development. I want to state right off the bat, I'm very much in favor of this. Currently, as a gun owner, I have to drive long distances to pursue my sport of shooting. The other thing I like about this one is, unlike some pistol ranges, this will have 100-yard indoor range. As an avid hunter in the area, I would find that very beneficial also, as opposed to having to go all the way up to the Cherry Creek Shooting Range. Or the other one that's available is out in Lakewood, it's called Blue Core Shooting, and it is obviously a long ways from the Parker area. Noise-wise, again, on a personal basis, I've never encountered any outside noises within the gun ranges that I have been to. I do appreciate people worrying about that, but as a personal experience, I can assure them, you don't hear the outside noises at today's gun ranges. So again, I would like to support this business within Parker. Thank you all.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Come in.
Hello. My name is Amelia Pierce, and I live at 15215 Oaklett Street in Parker. And I just want to say that I do think that the gun range is a beautiful facility. I think what you're going to offer would be very nice. I just think it is the wrong location. I think that it should be in an industrial area, not a commercial space. My house backs up to where this is proposed to be built, and I am concerned about the health, safety of the lead, how often that filter is going to be changed, and everything that goes in with that. I also agree with the safety of it being where it's not 200 feet from residents and the safety of, people are going to try to break in. And my concern is when the police are coming down chambers to catch them, where are they going to run? They are going to run into Parker Homestead where those 60 homes are and maybe hide in our backyards. That is what scares me, is the safety. Because yes, robberies happen at banks and stuff, but we're not talking about a bank in this area. We're talking about an indoor gun range that will bring that safety concern. So once again, I do oppose this location. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Matt Brookshire. I live at 15048 Yellow Throat Street in the small community that's on the board there, the 60 homes. I'm completely in favor of the gun range. I am completely against the location. Living in this community, I can tell you, people have spoken to what they think home values will do. I sell real estate. I can tell you, since the time that the gun range has been announced, one house that was under contract has fallen out of contract because of the gun range. Another sale that occurred, the buyer said that if they'd known there was going to be a gun range in there, they would not have bought in there. So it's not a matter of if it affects our property values, it already has. Another thing I want to talk about is the noise. When they announced that they were going to propose a gun range here, I went to Centennial Gun Club. I sat out in the parking lot. You can hear the guns. It's faint, it's not jarring, it's not loud, but you can hear it. Out of curiosity, I walked to the same Holiday Inn that the gentleman earlier walked to, and I said, "Have you guys had any noise complaints at all from rooms or anything?" He said, "No." And I thought, wow, that's pretty awesome. And he said, "But it's probably because we have soundproofed glass covering the entire side of that building." So my question is, if you're going to build a hotel next to a gun range, why would you spend all the extra money to soundproof that entire side of the building if you can't hear anything anyway? So, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Lonnie Hudson and I live at 15161 Oaklet Street here in Parker. I'm the home on the slide that you see the side view of the home, and then you see the facility, and you see the gulch. That's my home. I understand everyone's concern, and I don't have any children there. My wife and I are older and our kids are graduating in college, so we're child-free. However, I am concerned about the children. The main point I want to make is that I have proved with this facility. I believe the applicant has made a very good presentation. I believe him, I trust him. And so I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is John Hatcher. I live at 17511 Holy Oak Court in Parker. Just want to say that I support the facility. I think all the people here tonight have made some very valid points, both for and against, that I don't envy your job in evaluating all those. I'd just like to bring up a couple of points that may not have been brought up. The first of which regards the crime factor. I haven't read every single word on the background of this project, but my question is, what does our Parker Police Force think about that? Have they provided input on what the impact might be? By the way, thank you for your service. Question regarding the air emissions. I spent a number of years in the hazardous waste industry, working in both air and hazardous Have we looked at what Centennial Gun Club or Blue Corps have as far as history in regards to emissions? These are commercial facilities that have the potential to emit lead. So they're subject to both EPA and state air emission regulations? What are their histories? And how does it compare with the engineering that's being developed for this facility? Perhaps something for you and the commission to consider if it hasn't been looked at or asked. Again, I support the facility. I think the people that live nearby have some very valid concerns. I think the engineers and Ryan have done an outstanding job of addressing those. And how we go about making sure that happens and stays that way, I believe is in your court. I think there's conditions that can be put on the facility, and maybe that's an area to look into. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Jeff Modlin, 10445 Meadow Run here in Parker. I'm here to support Ryan. I've known Ryan for several years, served on the HOA Committee with Ryan. And he's a stand-up guy. If he says he's going to do something, he'll do it. As such, I'm also in favor of the facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Thus, it looks like we've come to the end of our line, and so we will close the public comment on this matter. Further questions for Paul?
I do have one question that came up. Have the recent potential encroachment precautions been taken in the design of this facility?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear all of that. Will you say that again?
The potential, there's new improvements for access and the pillars in the front. Are those being considered for this facility?
They will be considered as part of the site plan review, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, or in this case Bryce, just to clarify, property tax revenue, the town's share of that in comparison with the county and the school district and other entities is pretty miniscule, isn't it?
The home values or impact to home values are not a part of the approval criteria, and therefore...
I was just trying to clarify that property taxes really aren't a big revenue source for the town. Is that was...
That is accurate.
Yeah, that the town primarily derives its operating budget from sales tax.
Yeah, so the town's mills are 2.4, 2.6, something like that, out of a typical tax bill that's anywhere from 98 to 130 mills.
Okay, I was just clarifying that for the person that asked the question. Other questions?
My understanding is that the Parker Police Department will be part of kind of the, they'll have a lot of input on this, correct?
So one of the proposed conditions of approval this evening is that with the development of the future site plan, that the applicant would work closely with Parker PD to help in the design of the facility in order to ensure that some of the safety concerns can be mitigated.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Yes.
Please.
If this were a retail establishment only, would it be a use by special review also?
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me, I apologize. No, it would not be. It's a use by right for retail sales.
Would that include sales of guns?
Yes.
Thank you. And another question I had is someone said something about decibel stacking. I was wondering if we could hear from the engineer or from you on whether or not those decibels stack in that manner.
Staff will defer to the applicant for that.
Sorry to make you all get up.
No problem. Again, Tom Brinkman, Parker Homestead Investments, developer of both heirloom Parker Homestead and also this site. I've been writing furiously with the help of my teammates. I've got nine pages. I've tried to accurately portray each of your names, so please, if I've gotten your name wrong when I try to answer your question, it's not for lack of trying.
Can you just respond to the commissioner's question first, please?
Oh, certainly.
Just commissioner's question.
Your question was decibel stacking?
Yes.
Jeff Kolcoski with Wave Engineering, Littleton, Colorado. The decibel stacking that was represented was incorrect. Decibel math doesn't work like normal math. As an example, 50 decibels plus 50 decibels equals 53 decibels, not 100. It's a logarithmic and exponential relationship. The other thing to remember, and that doesn't matter if it's 50 plus 50 or 60 plus 60, 60 plus 60 is 63. The other thing with respect to, I believe the reference that was made was 40 plus 50. The other thing to keep in mind is that when decibels add together, the higher number dominates. So 50 plus 50 is 53. As you get further apart, say 50 plus 45, 44, down to 40, the lower number has less impact on the higher number. So by the time you get to 10, 50 plus 40 is still 50. It doesn't add anything to the higher number. So 50 plus 20 is 50, 50 plus 30 is 50. Does that help?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Further questions?
I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn, but what's the protocol for maybe taking a 10-minute break?
No, I was going to do that.
Oh, okay.
I was waiting for the question to be over.
I'll come for a break. Because I have a long, I have a long list of questions.
Oh, so you still have more questions?
Yeah.
Okay. We need apparently to take a short break. Five minutes, we will resume at 9:08.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask Ryan to address that one.
We spent over six months looking at properties around. As a novice to this, I was just like, oh, look at all these signs. I can pick any of these wrong. Then there's PD guides and there's zoning. And then you get into the business aspects of it, of traffic counts and future traffic counts, and how all that's going to play into the business coming into your, excuse me, the clients coming into your business. After dwiddling through all of that data and everything, this is a prime facility, especially with the future development already under construction just off of Hess and Chambers. So that's kind of how we came to this site.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, one other point. The building is kind of long and oblong, and that also eliminates a lot of properties. And this developer was willing to work and subdivide the way we need it.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions, Kelly?
Yeah, I'll, not right now.
Sure.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
This is for staff. One of the conditions that you've proposed is condition number five. Is that an ongoing condition that would be during the entire life of the project? Or is that simply for the initial build-out and during the first year?
The conditions of approval would be in perpetuity.
In perpetuity, thank you.
Further questions? Further clarifications needed by commissioners?
I know there's some questions from the audience on lead poisoning and lead being contained. Can maybe you speak to how that will be handled?
Yes, certainly. We would like to have JC, our consultant from FFL, join us. He lives here, great. May we also have him, would it be appropriate, to address a couple of the other questions that...
Briefly?
Yes.
Here you go. Briefly. My name is John Clark, thank you. Good evening. Highland Ranch, Colorado, by the way. So pretty close to here, so. So what was your question about lead abatement?
Yeah, I think we just heard a lot of concern about that from the audience, so maybe just speak generally about how that would be.
So just to give you a little bit of background about FFL consultants, we're about a handful, seven consultancy firms commissioned by the industry, the entirety of the industry, which equates to about 135,000 licensees. We visit thousands of FFLs around the country every year. We are actually one of only two consultancy firms commissioned by the industry to work with the Department of Justice and ATF in building out programs to protect and ensure the compliance of FFLs. So being engaged by Ryan, you can kind of see his commitment to this project. I can tell you, ranges... I can tell you ranges today are much further along and advanced in their air filtration and air quality management. The systems that we've been speaking of tonight relative to, you know, they alert you if there are problems, these systems have very strict guidance. They are very much within the boundaries of what OSHA and EPA require. We actually go out and do OSHA inspections of facilities for a variety of reasons, but four of them are hearing conservation, lead abatement, personal protective equipment, and then some of the other environmental health and safety issues that occur in all businesses. So, lead abatement and lead management is one of them. So we look at it very strictly. We actually evaluate and assess these businesses more strictly than OSHA does. So when you hear about OSHA coming into facilities, you have to understand OSHA is occupational safety and health, okay? That is due to, chances are, or the majority of times, is because an employee has filed a complaint. Not the general public, but typically the employee. So when we go into a facility, we build out their programs, we build out their plans, and we conduct follow-up evaluations and assessments of those facilities to ensure that they are abiding by what they say. So, and being commissioned by the industry, the industry is actually supporting them in their abatement efforts, in their compliance efforts. They're protecting them, so that's what we provide. Does that answer your question?
I think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
What other questions?
Further questions?
None from me.
Okay.
I have a few. I think I have maybe three or four others here. So, there's one question about how firearms...if there's any requirements for how firearms are carried from vehicles to the building.
I think I'll just...so, depending on state regulations as well as county regulations, there are requirements. In the county of Douglas, I believe that a firearm can be carried on property. You know, typically individuals that are going to a range are going to carry their firearm in a range bag. Most ranges in the area, anybody that is going to a range typically carries that firearm unloaded. So, most ranges require that if you do have a firearm, it is unloaded unless it is holstered. And then in Douglas County, the firearm must be holstered, okay?
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, I think I just have two more, so maybe this for...I don't know if I have someone from Parker PD who can speak to...
That's really not...they're rolling this. They're here. I mean, we could ask Paul.
Would that be appropriate to ask questions of...
Go ahead and ask.
Oh, okay. I know there's a lot of concern maybe about smash and grabs, so I'm curious how that compares to other types of burglaries.
First of all, I'm Joe Degenhart, commander with the Parker Police Department. I don't have those numbers compared...comparison, but we don't see this as becoming or having an issue or increasing crime rates.
Okay. All right.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
I can actually lend some insight to that as well. FFL consultants, as I stated earlier, is one of two consultancy firms commissioned by the firearms industry. We were also selected as one of two consultancy firms to architect a program called Operation Secure Store. It's a joint initiative between the Department of Justice, the ATF, and the industry. I've heard a lot of numbers quoted. They're actually old numbers, and we're very proud of this as being one of two consultancy firms that have worked on this project with the Department of Justice and ATF. 2018 numbers were just released. Due to our efforts and due to the industry's efforts and the ATF and local law enforcement as well, we've actually realized a 27% reduction in FFL burglaries in the past year. That's 2017 to 2018. I also heard somebody mention something about bank robberies. Having been former law enforcement and worked in property crimes, I can tell you, as well as in financial crimes, I can tell you that 2017, I want to say, we do do these comparisons quite often, right around 3,900 bank robberies in comparison to a little over 500 FFL burglaries, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Further questions?
I think my last question's maybe more of a philosophical question about the issue of compatibility, and it seems there's maybe some disagreements in the audience about what is compatible with the neighborhood. And I know in the staff report, staff determined that it is compatible, so Paul, I don't know if you can speak to that at all, what determines if something's compatible with the neighborhood?
So, in this set of circumstances, the neighborhood, the area around the subject property has a variety of uses, including sporting uses. There are recreation amenities in terms of the trail and the open space, there's drainage infrastructure in there, there's single-family detached homes, there's athletic fields, both football stadium as well as several baseball stadiums, there are...there's a church there, and so there really is a mix of uses, and some of the existing uses include sporting uses. And the addition of another sporting opportunity in this area, while being able to mitigate some of the concerns that were identified through the detailed review process and the conditions of approval, was staff's determination for compatibility.
Okay, great, thank you.
I don't have anything else.
No.
We will close the public hearing at 9:18. Now, Commissioner, discussion.
I grew up in a home that I had a...my oldest brother was a New York City cop, didn't get any better than that. He made it to detective grade. I held a gun before I was probably five, but with the safety on and no bullets. When he passed, I inherited his gun, and I kept it until I gave it to his son. I think everything has been met. I don't see any huge...I understand the concerns. I commend the young...the student from legend for coming and speaking up. I've met with different...seen different things, but I think what we are promoting here and looking for is that we are hopefully going to educate our public. You start in your comment, you said you would be doing monthly events, and hopefully that's education, it's safety, and I don't see any issues. I understand that everything that is going to be monitored is in perpetuity, and I'm in favor of it.
I would like to say thank you to Mr. Bestwell. It sounds like you're thought of pretty highly for the folks that know you, and it sounds like this project has been thought out pretty heavily. Again, I appreciate all the comments. Guns are...it's a big topic in our society. I also understand location, and locations, we just can't move things willy-nilly all the time like some people would like to do, whether it fits your narrative or it doesn't. So I under...you know, appreciate the fact that you looked at other locations to fit this project. I think it's a unique opportunity for Parker, for those who are, you know, go to ranges. You do have to travel, and especially when you're shooting long guns. It's pretty hard to find some rifle ranges. It sounds like the noise has been carefully thought out. It does fit the master plan, and it does include education, and educated gun owners are typically safer gun owners. So, I do appreciate it. I think, you know, I am definitely in favor of it. And it does, you know, again, if you look at it from the perspective of football, baseball, shooting, shooting is a recreational sport, and so it does fit in with some of the sporting events that, you know, kind of go over there. You talk about sports. Some people talk about the fact that they like to hear the football games on a Friday night, they like to hear the band practice. There's other people that like to hear a duck call and the shot of a shotgun on a Saturday morning. So, you know, we have to take those into consideration, that everybody's wants and wishes are a little different. So, I'm in favor of the project. I think it's a great project.
Okay, I was just going to add to that, that the decision can't be based on opinion about what people like or don't like. It's strictly based on does it meet the criteria or not? And, you know, as we heard in their comments, some people like this use, other people might not like the use or like the location, but our decision has to be based on whether or not it meets the criteria. After hearing everything tonight, I am confident that it does meet all nine criteria, that the noise will be handled, any sort of air quality concerns, and these are all...I don't know if everyone's aware of...there's nine conditions of approval that are being placed on this project. So those would go above and beyond what maybe another applicant would be required to do. So with those conditions in place, I feel confident that all those nine criteria are being met.
I concur with my fellow commissioners. The whole idea of a use by special review is to give the community an opportunity to look at the project and say, well, this is great, but it's not going to work because of A, B, C, D. And what they've done is they've taken that and they've addressed each of those issues that have come up. I was particularly concerned about noise in the noise report, and I went through it very carefully, because there's liars, damn liars, and statisticians, and so, you know, traffic reports, noise reports, you've got to read those really carefully. I have, I am convinced that staff and the consultants have done a good job of preventing injury and loss of value in terms of enjoyment to the nearby property owners. I was also very concerned about the pollution idea and the concept of lead poisoning. It does not take much lead to harm a child, and there's all kinds of children in the neighborhood, in the local school area, and it travels very easily on the air. However, I, again, looked very carefully. I actually, like, had to pull out my old statistics manual to make sure I understood all the stats they were using. I'm convinced that this...the air...someone said the air coming out of that place is going to be cleaner than the air in here, and they did studies of it, not the ambient air, but they were talking about the air that would actually come out of the exhaust would be fairly clean. And for that reason, I feel confident that that's not going to be an issue. Guns can be scary, and I think having an educated public and the fact that he...our applicant could have just opened up a gun store as a use by right with no comment from the public at all. But because he wants to help people learn and practice and teach, he has gone through a great deal of work to make sure that he has tried to meet the needs of the entire community, and I applaud him for that. And I look forward to this gun range.
Well, I agree with a lot of the statements that were made earlier this evening about the education being a benefit, the gun range being a benefit. I do think that the applicant has went above and beyond. However, I don't see the compatibility in the neighborhood and in the nearby school, so I will have to say that I disagree with the commissioners on meeting all criteria, and I'm opposed.
First off, I would like to thank the members of the community. I know a lot of folks left, but, you know, we've had a lot of hearings over the years, and I just need to compliment each and every one of you on how you presented your points and you recognized both the points of people that might have had a different point of view and gave them credit for theirs, and then expressed yours so nicely without...it seems like anymore we devolve into this ugly, snarky kind of thing, but to your credit, I'm, you know, this was just a nice discussion with community members, and I think that's important. We need more of that. And so, I too feel that this applicant, given the nine conditions that he's agreed to monitoring and to working with Parker Police and making sure it's a secure location, we've certainly seen applicants in the past that wouldn't have done that. And so, in that case, it looks like a high-quality facility that a lot of labor and effort has gone into, and so I will be in support of it as well. Do we have a motion?
I move that Planning Commission recommend...
That's this one.
That one?
Yeah, just make sure I get it back.
Big font. I move Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the use by special review subject to the nine criteria...nine conditions listed in staff's report.
Second.
It's been moved by Eliana, seconded by Kim. That Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the use by special review subject to the nine criteria listed in the staff's report. Those in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes. Those opposed?
Yes.
Okay, passes six or five, one. Staff items?
No, sir, there are no additional staff items.
Then we will adjourn at 9:28.